It's fantastic to see such a diverse group of people here, so thank you for coming. I'm going to start welcoming you to Ballot Boxing. This is the District One Forum, as if you didn't know it already. My name is Joy Diaz and I'm a reporter with KUT News and I will be your host and your moderator for this evening, so I am very, very, very glad that you're here. Thank you so much for coming. This is the first of, take this, 11, 11 candidate discussions that we're going to have. And a group of partners came together, that's KUT, The Austin Monitor, The Austin Chronicle, KXAN, and Univision. All of these groups are going to be hosting these forums for you. I want to take the opportunity to thank all of our partners, and one of them is Rock and Roll Rentals. They are doing the sound for us, isn't that amazing? It sounds really good. I don't know if you've ever been to some forums where everything cries like "Ahh!" It's horrible. Not today. Rock and Roll Rentals set us up, so thank you so much. The forums here are designed to give Austinites a chance to meet and to vet the folks who are running to represent us. So this is a great opportunity that we have. Let's start with a little housekeeping. Is everybody ready? First, I'd like to remind you that we have more information about the series at kut.org. While you're there, I want you to RSVP for all the other forums, so that we have a great showing of people. And the other thing that I also wanted to tell you is that after the introductions, candidates will have one minute to make their initial remarks. I know it's super short, but we have a wide variety of candidates here, so one minute is going to be all that they get. Then we will move into what we're calling a lightning round. It's going to be kind of like a quiz show-style segment. We're going to have some questions for them, and whoever wants to answer raises their hand and we'll give them one minute again to answer. After that, we will open up to questions from you, and that's going to be very interesting. I've been told that we have lots and lots of questions from you guys, so thank you for that already. If you didn't know this, the easiest way to ask a question is to grab one of those cards that you probably got when you came in and lift it up when you're ready, and one of our helpers is going to come and get it from you. If you do not have a card, raise your hand, like back when you were in kindergarten, you'll get a card, okay? One of our helpers will get cards. There's a couple of people over here at the front who need cards. Wonderful. When you're ready with your question, raise your hand again, okay? I have a wonderful man here hosting with me. Mike Canon is here from one of our partners, The Austin Monitor, and he wants to remind you that we are on social media. Mike, please remind us.
We are on social media, hashtag BBD1. If you want to ask a question via Twitter, I'll be looking at it here, and that's as good a way as getting them down and no card.
And if you forget things like I do, I was thinking BBD1, BBD1, oh, Ballot Boxing, District One, hello. So that's one way to remember, okay? BBD1. Got it. Now, this is the order in which your candidates will appear on the ballot, so I'd like you to welcome all of them with a warm round of applause. And they will be introducing themselves, but at least everybody gets a great welcome. And now I'm going to ask them to give their name, and I'm going to give them one minute to give their initial remarks, okay? Everybody ready? This is the way your ballot is going to look like. We are missing one candidate. Only one candidate is not here today, Mr. Norman Jacobson, but everybody else is here. So please, George, do us the honor.
All right. My name is George Hindman. I'm a professional engineer and owner of Keystone Aerospace, which is a small business here in town that specializes in research and development. I'm also an inventor. I'm the patent holder of several patents dealing with wireless communication technologies. I'm a 20-year resident of Austin. I came here from Houston, where I worked at the NASA-Johnson Space Center, training astronauts and mission controllers on how to use the shuttle's computers and navigation equipment. I came here to go to grad school at UT. I have a master's degree in aerospace engineering, and after I graduated, I went and worked at Applied Materials and Dell Computers before forming my own company. My wife, Delia, and I live in the J.J.C. Brook neighborhood, which is just east of the old airport, and we volunteer at various ministries at St. Mary Cathedral. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm an engineer. Engineers look at problems, look at data, and then figure out solutions, and that's why I'm running for city council, is I want to figure out the solutions to make Austin better and to make District One better.
Thank you so much, George. Sam, please.
Hello. My name is Sam Osimini. Some people call me Osimini Sam. It's fine with me. I've lived here for almost 25 years. I went to school here at University of Texas. I studied political science. I graduated. I went to graduate school. I studied political science. I went back to school again, and I studied international relations. Right now, I teach at Austin Community College and have a small business called Tropical Market on North Lamar. I ran for city council before, and some of you guys voted for me, and I would like your vote this time around. There are some issues in this campaign. Affordable housing, we're not talking about it tonight. Transportation issues, we're not talking about it tonight. The police and public relation issues, tactics. Those are the things we're going to discuss tonight. This election is about you, it's not about us. Who do you think that can fight for you? Please vote for Sam Osimini for city council, District One. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Now Christopher, please.
Hey. My name's Chris Hutchins. I'm born and raised here. I currently manage a restaurant. I'm a musician, really, in real life, and I have a family, I have a daughter and a wife. So I'm running because I think we'll be able to achieve the stabilization of the cost of living. I think it's important for major employers to pay a living wage, and the compromise is $15 an hour, it probably should be higher. And also, transportation that makes sense for the people that use it. Like, you know, taking the bus can take like an hour to get anywhere sometimes, and sometimes it's faster to walk or ride a bike, and not everybody can walk or ride a bike. That's why I'm running, and I guess we'll be talking about that more this evening.
A little, in more, in a little more detail. You're right. Dwayne, please introduce yourself.
Hi. I'm Dwayne Lofton, and I'm a native Austinite, and I've been very heavily involved here in the Austin community. I've worked with a number of different organizations. In the past, I served on the 2006 Bond Advisory Committee. I currently serve as the president of my neighborhood association, the Bacan Springs, Springdale Hills neighborhood, and I'm also a commissioner on the Austin Human Rights Commission. And over the past 25 years, I've worked with a lot of organizations, I've worked with a lot of people in this community, and I've learned a lot of things about Austin. And it's that wealth of experience that I've gained over the past 25 years that makes me want to be a candidate for District One. I want to take all that experience and represent you as we embark on the new challenges of the District Ones, or the district system. And I welcome your support, and I'm glad you're here, and thank you.
We're all glad that everybody's here. Thank you so much. Valerie, would you be next?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. My name is Valerie Menard, and I respectfully request your vote on November 4th for District One City Council.
Let us know a little bit about yourself, Valerie.
I am originally from San Antonio, Texas. I moved to Austin in 1982, so I've actually lived here longer than my hometown, 32 years, and I came to UT, and I am a Longhorn. I study journalism and English, and I've lived in my neighborhood of University Hills for the last 20 years. I, and I also just wanted to report that I successfully argued my property taxes at Travis County Appraisal, so I'm here to stay. I have served, I am the president of the Center for Mexican-American Cultural Arts. I have done that for the last 10 years, and I'm here in this race because I'm thrilled about the chance for true representative government and to bring some of the issues of District One to City Hall, and I look forward to representing you. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Michael.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Cargill, and I served 12 years in the United States Army. While I was in the United States Army, I was an instructor and a teacher at the Armed Forces School of Music, and I taught all of our Marines, our US Navy and Army personnel tactics and techniques in that. So I can definitely relate to you when it comes to the music community here in Austin. And also, I was a network operations manager in charge of most of Texas and the neighboring states, bringing DSL to the community. Also, after that, I was the owner of a trucking company. And the trucking company with that, I can definitely, you know, relate to you when it comes to the traffic issues that we have here in central Texas. And then now, currently, I'm the owner of Central Texas Gun Works, which is a gun store. I own that with my domestic partner. We bring diversity to Austin. I am diversity. We've lived in Austin for 16, we've been together for 16 years. We lived in the same house here in Austin for 14 years. We built that house from the ground up. So definitely, you know, take a look at me, because Cargill will get the cars moving.
Aura.
Good afternoon. I'm Aura Houston. I am a longtime resident of District One, have lived here a lot of years. I've been able to see the good, the bad, and the not-so-pretty of Austin city government. I attended Elsie Anderson High School. I graduated from Houston Tillotson University with a bachelor's degree in psychology and sociology. I'm a mother and a grandmother, and I have lots of friends who keep me young and active. I think that what I want you to know about me is that I'm a bridge builder. That's one of the skill sets that I bring to this council, is that I'm able to talk with various kinds of people and bring them to the table so that we can come up with not only creative solutions, but inclusive solutions. District One and the people who've lived here have not been very attentive. The city of Austin has not been very attentive to our needs, and so it's very critical that we listen to you and that we respond, and your voice is heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew.
Hi. My name's Andrew Bucknell, and I'm a candidate for city council, District One. And luckily, I know some people in here, and I've talked to you for more than a minute, but for the rest of you, I'll try to tell you a little bit about myself in the minute that we have, our 48 seconds. So I'm a native Austinite. I've lived in District One for 16 years. I was introduced to District One by my neighbor, Joe Hutchinson, and his mom, Mama Dear. They were really accepting of me, and they encouraged me to get involved with the Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association. At the association, I served as co-president, and I really learned a lot. I had a mentor there, I had several mentors there, including Dr. Exaltin Delco, who encouraged me to go to Houston Tillotson University. I learned so much at Houston Tillotson and from the association. The biggest lesson that I've learned in District One is that we can overcome whatever barriers are before us. We have obstacles, but we have opportunities, and if we build strength and diversity, we can get things done in Austin, Texas. I'm Andrew Bucknell. Thank you very much.
Wow. Everybody stuck to their minute. Good job, guys.
Pretty impressive.
So I am impressed, yeah. So we will not put anybody on the spot, but I'd like to ask some questions, and if you know the answer, just like when you were in elementary school, you said, "Pick me, pick me, pick me," okay? I want those hands up high, so I can see them. Let's see. Are you ready for this, candidates? What style of government does Austin operate under? Oh my goodness, okay, let's see. Now let's see if it's right. Andrew Bucknell.
We have a home rule government with a strong manager form of government.
A strong manager form of government? Anybody else that wants to talk about it? Yes, sir?
Yeah. I'm the only teacher here. I teach government.
Oh, that's not fair. That's so not fair.
We have what we call a council, council manager form of city government, where power belongs to the city manager, not the mayor of Austin.
Despite what we may think?
Absolutely. The city manager runs the city. The mayor is just like, just hold the meeting for the city council, but the city manager has the power to run the city.
Wow. Okay, let's see if you guys know this one. How many employees does the city of Austin have? Whoa, Valerie went up first. Okay, here we go.
We're roughly 13,000.
13,000? Do you have another estimate, Aura?
Yeah, it's about 12,800.
12,000, change. Okay, absolutely, absolutely. You guys are right. Okay, what is the city's income tax rate? Anybody? Hands up. Oh, oh, they're thinking, oh, okay. Dwayne?
It's, I believe it's 48, or 48.7 cents per 100.
Oh goodness. We got that wrong. Why are your faces, okay, let's see. George?
Did you say income tax rate or property tax?
Ah, here we go. It was a trick question. Yes, I did say income tax rate. We don't have any, oh my goodness, okay. Now let's see.
But was my answer correct?
For another question, yes. From where does the city get the majority of its revenue? Anybody wants to, okay, Sam, let's see.
I would say property taxes.
Yes, absolutely. Ding 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 ding. You've got that right. How about this one? How large is the city's budget in dollars, not in pesos, not in euros? Whoa, whoa, too many hands. Ah, who should we give it to? Let's see. Christopher.
I think it's, I think it's supposed to be something like 800, 850 billion?
Oh, that was wrong, my friend. So wrong.
Okay.
Okay, George?
The, the actual revenue is about three and a half billion, of which the general fund is about 800 million.
Absolutely. Okay, okay, okay. So we talked about the city's budget, the general fund. I should have said general fund. You're right. I should have said general fund. Three and a half billion, okay. Now, what portion of the city's budget is taking, is taken up by public safety? Ah, Dwayne's hands went up first. Oh my goodness. Okay, what is it?
Roughly 70%. 69.9.
Yeah, because that's two-thirds?
Yes. Ding 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 ding. Okay. I want to remind everybody that we are on social media, so if you want to hashtag something, hashtag it. Mike, what is it?
The hashtag is hashtag BBD1.
BBD1.
Already got some tweets at me, so.
Oh wow.
Yeah. So get your tweets in.
Mike, would you like to lead us with one question from those tweets?
Sure. We got a, we actually got a question this afternoon.
Wow.
This is from Brennan Griffin, and I'll let you throw it out to the candidates.
So this is what we're going to do. Let me just say this really quickly. Since we started with George, why don't we go with Andrew and we move that way, okay? Okay.
So this is from Brennan Griffin. Almost all D1 schools, District One schools, are under-enrolled according to AISD. One of the biggest impacts the city can have, says Brennan, on AISD is through land use. Would you support increased multifamily housing in areas near schools to combat under-enrollment and help keep these schools open?
That is an interesting question.
Well, Brendan, it's Brendan, right?
Brennan, I think.
Brendan, okay. I think that one of the issues that we have with District One schools is people transferring out, so we have a lot of moving households, a lot of people moving out or getting placed out of being able to have homeownership to afford living over here, and people that are coming in are often transferring their children out. So I don't know that just increasing stock is going to increase enrollment at the school, so I think there are some broader questions that we'd have to ask there. But I do think that we do have a lot of opportunity. We have a huge amount of undeveloped land over here. It's really important that we decide what to do with that and that we have stakeholder engagement, involvement, that we involve neighbors with the decisions about what do we do here? What's compatible with the neighborhood, but what also increases density to encourage the kind of growth that's appropriate for the locations that we have open for development.
Let's go down the table. Anybody else who wants to tackle this? Aura.
Yes, Aura Houston. That question is very complex and very dense, and I think that in order to unpack all of that, we have to look at the history of Austin Independent School District. This has not just started. The inequality of our school system has been something that has been a generational issue. So as we get new neighbors who move into the, to District One, they do not place their children in public schools, and so there's got to be some kind of coordination between the school district and the citizens, city council and Travis County, to talk about improving the quality. I think we need to ask for a carve-out of the Robin Hood Plan. We send most of our money to other schools outside of this district. For those Title I schools, I'd like to see us be able to carve out some money to go back and reinforce the quality education, so more people would have their children in school in District One.
Talk about complexity. Michael, do you want to address that question?
I agree. It is a very complex problem. We do need to, and we do need to focus on things like the after-school programs, and then also, just like, you know, and I agree with, you know, the first two, you know, comments there, ditto, definitely 100%, but I support, I do support choice, and I do support, you know, people that actually homeschool. And by, you know, giving something back to those people that actually homeschool, I think it would give some competition to the school district, and maybe they will step up to the plate a little bit, and, you know, it will bring a little more enrollment.
Valerie?
Yes, this is very much an important issue, and again, it's difficult being in city council, not being part of AISD to address the education challenge we have in our district, but as Andrew mentioned, we have 45 square miles. This is one of the largest districts in the 10-1 plan, and I've been driving through it. There is a lot of wide-open space, a lot of opportunity. We need economic development that will bring jobs, that will also encourage some multifamily housing, but we also need to look at the Land Development Code, which is now currently being rewritten. That is going to be the key to making sure that whatever new development, and we do need that in District One, whatever new development comes will be compatible with the neighborhoods and will be conducive to positive quality of life for our District One.
Dwayne?
Okay. I work for the Texas Association of School Boards, and our number-one mission is public education in Texas. But here in Austin, and particularly District One, what I think the issue is, a lot of the residents that live in District One are renters, and a lot of those renters move from place to place so that they can get a cheaper rate. And oftentimes, when they move from one house or one apartment to the next, they're in a different school, and that's what's causing, or that's one of the reasons that's causing a lot of the underperformance in schools in District One. The second issue is, there's a lot of charter schools in this district, and those charter schools are competing with the public schools for students. The unfortunate part is, the charter schools only want the students that perform well. So what happens is, the students who don't perform as well are the ones that are getting left behind in the public school, and that's why we see so much underperformance, because we don't have that mix of students to kind of spur the weaker students to improve their skills. So I think we need to look at kind of some of the ways our.
Ultimately, it's an issue of access to resources. I know that when, you know, poverty provides somebody with a whole ton of mental anguish, and if we can keep public money allocated towards public need, and we, if we're going to develop where we have multifamily units and that kind of thing, if they're designed in such a way that promote like healthy minds and there are spaces where people can interact and be social with one another, maybe you'll see a change in this pattern. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Sam?
Thank you very much. As a teacher, I know what issues are. When it comes to public education, I strongly believe we should spend any resources, we should support our schools. Public school, I went to public school. My children, they go to public school, but what we see in the city of Austin is, the schools across, on the west side of Austin, is more, they have more resources or more equipped than the schools in East Austin. That shouldn't be the case anymore. Someone needs to stand up and speak up. We also need, we should hire more teachers also. Move those teachers to District One to help teach our kids. It doesn't make sense, we live in a city where if you live in West Austin or Northwest Austin, the schools in West Austin are better than the schools in East Austin. Something's wrong with that picture. We need someone to change that at the city hall, so we need to overhaul the whole AISD's policy to make this thing work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just would like to add, one of the reasons that people are leaving is just the rising property taxes that you can see all throughout town and Austin, but particularly District One. And I've proposed an across-the-board 10% homeowner's homestead exemption, but in addition to that, I'm proposing an extra 10% given to first-time home buyers, so that young families, young couples that are getting married and looking to establish themselves in the communities, have a way to get into the communities and then start a family, and that will help populate the schools.
We're going to keep this order from here to the end of the table, and this is the next question, candidates. It's a two-part question, so please listen carefully so that you answer both parts, okay? The first part that I want to ask you is, what is, in your mind, the biggest issue confronting District One? Okay? And part two of that question is, if you were elected, how would you address it? Just simple, simple question? Extremely loaded, right? Okay, candidates, are you ready? Andrew, would you?
I'd have to go first on every one.
Okay, we'll reverse it right after this one, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Just start with the biggest issue and then we'll reverse it.
I'm sorry to do this to you, but District One is so big and it's so diverse, there is not one biggest issue. We have a lot of biggest issues, and it really depends on the area that you live in. In some areas, it's transportation; in some, it's encroachment of commercial development or high-dense development; in some areas, it's irresponsible affordable housing that brings in prostitution and drug dealing and things that are undesirable. It's really different in other, in different areas. There are some areas that really have had very little engagement with Austin and are almost, in a way, feel outside of Austin. So I think one of the big challenges really that we have to do is to be able to pull this district together and to talk about what the issues are in the different areas. We're going to have to do a lot of traveling, we're going to have to go to all the different regions within District One, and we're going to have to talk to people and find out what the different issues are in the different areas. There are some obvious ones that are global with water, and there are some others with police-community relations, but really, we have a lot of different areas with very distinct and different needs.
So the way that you would address it is by reaching out?
Dialogue is the key, is building relationships and making those connections.
Thank you so much. Aura.
Although there are 46 square miles in the district, I think if I had to pin it down to one, one of the biggest issues is the lack of employment opportunities for people. Employment and education are the pathways for the people I care about out of poverty. And as you look at the incentives and the development of businesses in this town, they're not being located anywhere close to where the people who need the jobs are, and therefore they, and the transportation will not get them to where the new jobs have been placed. So that would be, how I would deal with that, is that I would incentivize jobs that bring clean, manufacturing, blue-collar, middle-class jobs into District One, so that they, the people who don't have jobs can have jobs and begin to climb out of poverty.
Thank you so much. Michael, remember two parts.
Oh my goodness, traffic, traffic, traffic. That's a no-brainer. Goodness, traffic. That's the problem. Everyone has that problem.
Well, so let's solve that no-brainer. How would you do it when you're, if you're elected?
I was owner of a transportation company, a trucking company, and what I would do is I would actually widen 183, get rid of that median and widen that road till it goes all the way down to the toll road and make it a highway, and then put your 18-wheelers on 183 or make it, try to make it free for them on the toll road. This, Austin is the only major city in this, one of the only few major cities in this country where your hazardous material trucks drive straight through downtown. That is a big, serious security issue. We have a hazmat truck that just caught on fire right next to the Austin Police Department just a few days ago. That is a security, that's, that's a serious issue there. And then they're also within a thron stow of the Capitol, so I would definitely do that, and then also.
Oh, no altsos, no more. Valerie, major issue. How would you solve it if you're elected?
Well, to echo what's been said, of course, we know it's property taxes for everyone, and we know traffic for everyone. For District One, this, it goes back to my, the reason that I'm running, this chance for representative government. So many parts of Austin, outlying parts of Austin, have really been neglected, and that's really what's happened to District One. We lack access to city services, and so we, so that, like Andrew said, so that includes a ton of things. We need bus service, we need parks, we need libraries, we need jobs, we need economic development. If you go out to District One, it is very beautiful. We have more acreage than any other district. But there is a lot of opportunity there. But again, we don't want to see things happen to our district that have happened, say, to the Guadalupe neighborhood or to Rainey Street. It has to be careful. We have to work with the land development code rewrite and make sure that what we bring into District One will really benefit our residents and elevate our quality of life.
Thank you so much. Thank you for staying within your time boundaries. Dwayne?
So District One is a very diverse district, not only in ethnicity, but also in incomes. But if you ask me, I would tell you the number one issue across the board is affordability. And the one thing that I would do to address the affordability issue is, first off, offer a property tax exemption, homestead exemption on your property taxes for the city of Austin. And the second thing is, for the kind of traditional East Austin where the majority of people are struggling with affordability, I would create a homestead preservation district. And in that homestead preservation district, offer through a private, public-private partnership, some assistance to the residents that live in that area to help with the affordability issue and the payment of their property taxes.
Thank you so much. Chris, what's the major issue in your mind?
Okay, since we've already spoke, talked about jobs, I want to say housing and the cost of living together. And that's the biggest issue, I think, in District One. People are getting priced out of their homes left and right. It's important for us to gain some footing in our district, in our territory. And then we can begin to address the other issues. One way that we can solve that is by having, yeah, a homestead exemption that's honored by the city. And then also, probably an exemption for people 65 and older, the terminally ill and the disabled that have lived here for maybe five or 10 years or more. And then we need to develop some kind of scheme that would help the service workers and the low earners stay in this side of town because that's why they're here. And since rent control is illegal in Texas, it would have to be called and designed by some other way and called something else, so...
We need some creativity there.
Yeah.
Sam?
Thank you very much. I think it's affordable housing. I strongly believe it doesn't make sense. We live in a city, our grandma, our parents have been forced to sell their homes because they cannot afford to live in their homes. So it doesn't make sense. The city of Austin has something to do with affordable housing in this city. We need to look at the policies of the city council that makes it impossible for people to build and people to rent. Our rent, they are all going up. People are not building more. And it creates a big influx of people moving out of Austin. So affordability is one of the main issues. As a city council member, we can have a 20% homestead exemption for homeowners in the city of Austin. It's a common sense solution. And also, make it possible that our seniors are not being forced to sell their homes and move out of Austin. Look at East Austin, East 11 and East 12th Street, what is going on?
Thank you so much. George?
When you narrow it down to District One, I would say affordability and jobs in sort of what I call smart economic growth. I highlighted two of the three points I have on property taxes. I think in order to make our area, District One, more affordable, I've proposed a 10% across-the-board homestead exemption and another 10% for first-time homeowners. And then on top of that, I've proposed a tax ceiling so that if you've been in your home for 25 years or more, at that 25th year, your tax level is frozen and you would never pay more than that as long as you live in your home. As far as jobs and economic growth, I think the city has spent a lot of time emphasizing incentives to large businesses. And I think we need to rebalance to smaller businesses because smaller businesses is where most jobs come from. So a lot of small businesses in town have problems expanding or succeeding because of regulations and the permitting process they have to go through. And I would emphasize, if I was on council, trying to streamline that process to help promote more jobs.
Thank you so much.
We got a lot of questions. And we're getting a lot of questions along a couple of themes. And I think I'll start with the first one that we've gotten. This is from somebody here in the audience. "We have very real, serious issues in Austin as it pertains to African-Americans. African-Americans are being pushed out of Austin, Texas. What can you do to address the problem of what they call black flight in Austin?" And I'll also ask you all to answer perhaps, remembering that you're running for the district that's been carved out as the African-American Opportunity District in the city.
So let's start with Sam, with George, I'm sorry. And we'll go down the table again.
Well, I think there is black flight, but in the district, there is flight in general. I mean, everybody, whether you're African-American or Latino, Anglo, Asian, the cost of living is just getting so high that people are leaving the district and going to the suburbs and going outside of town. So I think some of the issues that are common to not just black flight, but just all Austinites, I've highlighted about my homestead exemptions I would do to try to keep the cost down for staying here in Austin, particularly for people who have been here for 25 years or more, that they can stay in their homes. And I think just the District One being a, since we're going to geographic districts, there's going to be a better voice at City Hall. For the past 10, 20 years, we've really focused on really the center of Austin. And all the outlying districts, whether you're in east or west, have sort of gotten a short shrift. So I would emphasize more District One interest at City Hall.
Okay. I think one of the reasons you say the black population in Austin decreasing is lack of opportunities, jobs. You talk about the issue of affordable housing. And also, this perception about the police and public relation in the community also. Myself, I know how many times I've been stalled by the cops, you know, when just driving on the street. So we need someone that can just look into those issues and build a bridge between the Austin Police Department and the community. And also, every year, we do, we have a South by Southwest activities, ACL, in the city of Austin. And I think it makes a lot of sense also to have events that would attract predominantly African-Americans to the city also. The city can finance some of these events and encourage people to come to this city and see who we are. What the city of Austin is not doing there? We promote events excluding the African-American population in the city. What do we do? They are forced to move out of the city.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so I think one big issue is an issue that everyone has, and that is people being priced out of their neighborhoods, out of their homes, whether you rent or own. Second, it's a cult, ultimately, it's, I think it's a cultural issue and it's a huge fight. And it's, some people think that the fight's over and it's not. There's a professor at UT named Bob Jensen that I, he did an experiment with this issue in particular, with his resume as a professor of journalism and all of his experience. He sent out a resume, one said Lamar Washington, the other said Robert Jensen. And I forget exactly how many companies he sent his resume out to, but I believe it was somewhere upwards of 100. Two responded to Lamar Washington and he got a response from every single employer he put his resume into. So that's a huge issue that can't really be addressed in one minute.
Thank you so much. Dwayne?
There was a recent study by the University of Texas that showed that Austin is the only city that's growing, Austin is the only city in the nation that's grown by double digits, but yet the African-American population is declining. And if you talk to the folks in the African-American community and you ask them why they're leaving Austin, the number one issue they will tell you is affordability. And if you ask them, well, what makes Austin so unaffordable? And the next answer is, well, I don't have a good, high-paying job. And so if we're going to work on this issue, I think we need to, number one, try and address the affordability issue. But more importantly, we need to figure out, how can we provide high-paying jobs to the people in East Austin, our minorities, in particular, African-Americans and Hispanics? And I think we will, if we can address that issue, I think we can prevent the exodus that we've been seeing in the African-American and Hispanic community.
Thank you so much.
I have to echo what's been said so far. We know that the reason is it's too expensive and there's not enough services offered to our African-American community. And so, goes back to what I've been saying, we need to improve the quality of life in District One and attract our African-American folks back from Flugerville and Round Rock, bring them home. But we have to improve that quality of life. And that includes more jobs, better schools, affordability, ability to afford your own, your home or to at least access affordable housing. Those are big issues. And until we fix those issues, we're not going to be able to provide that enticing environment. But we're going to work on it. I'm committed to working on it. This is a beautifully diverse district. We have 43% Latino, 28% African-American, 23% non-Hispanic white in our LGBT community here. There's, it's a wonderful community and I think we just need to see it blossom. And that's what I'm going to focus on.
Thank you.
I'm a small business owner and customer service is number one for me. And the citizens, you know, are our customers. My introduction to the city of Austin, when I drove into Austin for the first time, I was pulled over by an Austin police officer. And he actually got me out of the vehicle, and I'm a small business owner. He got me out of the vehicle and I was in a rental car. And he actually called the rental car company to verify that I rented the gun in good standing. So definitely, police accountability is going to be the problem. We need to...
Don't eat up his seconds. 23, 22.
We need to seriously address this issue and be serious about it and not just wait until election time to decide that we're going to do some type of form and sit down and try to think about discussing police accountability. We need to actually do something about it. And if you want something done about it, you vote Michael Cargill because Cargill will.
Thank you so much, Michael. Ora?
Well, I'm going to start at a different place. The city of Austin prides itself on being very prosperous and progressive and liberal. And the city of Austin is very racist. So we have to start with the problem, admitting the problem, and then trying to find out ways to fix the problems. This started back in 1928 when the foundation of this city was planned. And we still are on the same kinds of grids that we were there, except now the grid is being pushed further, further east. So there are more new neighbors coming in. But we don't even want to talk about systemic racism and unconscious bias in this city because we've got that all figured out. It's an illusion that we continue to say that we are the best and the brightest and we don't have any, any kind of discrimination. We don't have a sense of place. As black people, I hear them talking about a lot of things, but they don't feel like there's a sense of place for them in Austin, Texas.
Andrew?
I think that one of the challenges of answering this question is that the people who have been displaced and pushed out of Austin aren't in Austin. So we have to go out and talk to the people who have been displaced and talk to them and try to have a discussion about, it's not just a question of why are people leaving Austin, but why aren't more African-Americans coming to Austin? So there's two parts of that equation. I want to know what kind of recruiting we're doing at our institutions of higher education from University of Texas. I know Houston Tillotson is doing a lot and now has added a master's degree in education. But I also know that our tax system is just structured in a way that does not help our past inequities. We have a disparate taxing system that impacts people that have lower incomes. And when you've been historically disenfranchised and discriminated, you're going to have lower income. When a house is sold, all of those exemptions that the elderly person has go away. So if someone is now living outside the city, that chance of coming back is extremely slim because the new tax evaluation is going to be so much higher. So it's really a complex issue that we're going to have to look at solutions and involve people that have left Austin in this discussion.
Thank you so much. We have another huge question and I hope that you are enjoying the answers. Here we go, are you ready? What issues are citywide? Another two-part question. Issues that are citywide. But that if you were elected, tell me how you would work with the other 10 people that will be on city council? Okay? Got it? George?
All right. Citywide issues, I would go with transportation and sort of a breakdown of our aging infrastructure. I think Michael's hit the points about traffic, traffic, traffic. One thing I was sort of surprised in the forums is that most of the panelists here, most of the candidates seem to agree that Project Connect is not the best way to spend the short-term finances for transportation needs. I feel like money should be better allocated to improving bus routes and increasing bus routes in addition to just doing some basic traffic management, signal synchronization, things along those lines. Working with other, the other 10, the other nine district members, everybody has transportation issues in their district. Another thing that they have issues with is water. We lose 3 billion gallons of water every year just from leaking pipes. And I think we need to emphasize more bond issues in the future towards taking care of our infrastructure such as pipes and focusing on that issue.
Thank you so much. Let's move on.
All right, thank you. I think before I answer this question, I have to clarify something, right? We, one of the, I don't think the city of Austin is racist, the way somebody just classified it. We have some individuals who are racist, but to call the whole city racist is kind of too much. As a leader, our goal is to bring people together, not to divide people. And to answer your question, I think it's about issue of police and the community is a big issue in the city of Austin, the police relations. If you look at most of the police shootings in this city happen in District One. The question is, why is it that every police shooting, most of them happen in District One? Does it mean all the criminals are in District One? No. Does it mean all the good guys on the west side? No. We need to go back and find out why is it that officers are quick to shoot people in District One? That's one of the top issues I will address as a council member to bring the community together is police shooting in District One. We need to stop it.
Thank you so much.
The, so there is a racist problem with the city government and the police. It's really obvious. But besides that, there's also the, so the biggest issue for me, like first of all, we need to be able to stay in our homes. And I think the biggest thing is for the city to force the Travis County Central Appraisal District that appraises the property to appraise according to the Consumer Price Index, maybe on the scale of neighborhoods throughout the city. And we would have to pass an ordinance that would force them to do that. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think the top two issues for the entire city of Austin are transportation and affordability. If you talk to all the candidates and including the mayor, they all agree that the top two issues are transportation and affordability. And so, because we all agree that those are the top two issues, I think it will be easy for us to come together and try and work on those issues. The problem is, especially when we talk about transportation and affordability, there is no easy answer. And so I think that's what the rub is going to be, is trying to figure out, what do we do about those issues? But in terms of, what is the issue? I think we all agree that the top two issues are transportation and affordability.
Thank you.
Agreed. Again, the top two issues, property taxes, affordability. But property taxes, and I am on board supporting homestead exemptions. Whatever scenario we come up with, we've had 10% across the board, 20% or just a flat fee. But that will be my number one priority to take care of that and to give property owners, homeowners relief there. Secondly, traffic. I'm saying open the toll roads. We just got to open them up. They were not built, they were built against the will of the people and their usage or lack thereof shows that. We're not using them. They are not a solution to traffic congestion. And when people say you've got an express lane on Mopac, it's a toll road and we're not going to use it. But we're continually building them and continually wasting taxpayer money. So I would like to, if we can't open them up, I believe if we did, you would see some relief in congestion. So maybe we can start with a Friday, Free Friday, toll-free Fridays. How about that? Let's just start with that and then move forward. We need freeways, not toll roads.
Michael?
And I'm going to stick with it. I'm going to stick with traffic, traffic, traffic. And that's going to be the problem across the city. Anywhere you go, it takes you forever to get anywhere in this city. And like I said before, widen 183. But in addition to that, what I would do is also ask some of our city workers, and that's going to be some of the things that we actually have control over, have the city workers, try to get them to carpool and also maybe even work from home, maybe once a, maybe once a week or once a month or something of that nature. And then also, what we can do is, in addition to widen that 183 and making it all, go all the way down and sticking those 18-wheelers and sticking them on 183 and sticking them possibly on the toll road, because that toll road, I don't care what you say, this rail that we're talking about building spending $147 million per mile is not going to solve our problem with traffic and is just going to push us down the road where we're going to have to still deal with traffic here in Austin. $147 million a mile, think about that. And it's only going from Riverside to ACC and to UT. It's not... It's not going to service anything, the people that are coming from up north or the people that are coming from down south. We got to do something about this traffic.
Michael, we got to do something about your timing. Stick to one minute.
Okay. I think the two biggest issues for the city is this unparalleled escalating growth that we keep doing. It's not sustainable. It's causing a lot of problems that we're all talking about and that's across the city. And the other one is congestion. If you think about where the growth is occurring, it's occurring, occurring in the same places. Central business, we've got the medical school, we've got the innovation zone, we've got the Walla Creek project, all of that is happening downtown. And so we've got to find a way to have people get into their cars on the outskirts of town, get out of their cars on the outskirts of town, get in public transit and ride into downtown and then have a system of connectivity that goes around town. Shorter bus routes, more direct bus routes, predictable bus routes, but congestion and the unparalleled growth is going to kill this city.
Andrew.
As it has for the last 100 years, Austin is going to double in population in the next 25 years. There's nothing we can do to stop that. We have to prepare for the growth and we have to be ready for it. Code Next is the most important issue before us. We have to protect our areas, our neighborhoods, and we have to allow opportunities for growth that help address all these issues because through growth and proper land use development, we can have affordability, we can have transit-oriented development, we can have safe mixed-use, accessible, reasonably-priced, transit-oriented housing. We can address a lot of these issues through the Code Next process, but we're going to have to watch it and that's going to come to the 10-1 to do that. The other biggest issue is community police relations. We do a great job with violent crime. We do not do a great job with property crime. We don't do a great job with community policing because it falls to the commander's forum. The commanders do it and the district reps do the community policing. We need to fund the police, to have enough police, to have time to interact with the community. If you don't interact, you have fear and with fear you have the basis for the overuse of force with people of other communities.
Thank you so much. I want to hear from you guys and I believe you've been sending questions to Mike, so here we go.
Lots of questions. We're going to go back to one of those themes I was talking about.
Do you have a card?
Somebody just broached that issue and, and it's Proposition 1 and I think I want to ask you guys...
Just let me stop you for just one second. Some people are asking me, how do I ask a question? Grab a card from one of our helpers, just raise your hand and they'll bring it to you. There's a few people here that need a card. There's a few hands up, so if you could please bring some cards to the front, that'll be great. Thank you so much. Mike, please.
So with Proposition 1, some of you have already stated whether you're for and against it in some strong terms. I think, I think I'd like to hear from the rest of y'all, how you feel about Proposition 1. I think the folks out there would like to hear about how you feel about Proposition 1. And don't just say, if, if, tell us what you might do if, if Proposition 1 fails. Tell us what you might do if Proposition 1 passes.
And let's start from this side so that we can give everyone a break, especially George and Andrew. They need a break, but I'm sorry. Start in the middle? Let's just do this.
I was hoping you wouldn't notice. I know, I'll take it.
Let's break the mold and let's just have Valerie take it like a champ. Okay.
Great, thank you. No, I don't support Project Connect for the first reason, because it's going to increase property taxes and our citizens are clamoring for relief, so I can in good conscience support it. But also I don't think, it will not affect congestion. It won't help congestion enough and it, we need better bus service. So I'm assuming it will fail and if it does, then I would definitely focus on extending our bus service. We have bus service, it don't have enough service, we don't have enough buses, folks have to, it takes hours to go anywhere where it would take 10 minutes in a car. That has to change and that's what I'm hearing as well from our, the forums that we've been going to. Our folks want city services and that includes bus systems.
Okay, shut, we move this way? Michael, do you want to take it?
Sure, not a problem at all. Definitely increase the bus stops, more buses, extend the hours, because another major problem that we have here in Austin is late at night, you have people that are trying to get home from going out, you know, downtown Austin and they're having to beg or ride from taxis or things like that. So I would actually, you know, focus on Uber or Lyft, you know, things of that nature, not spending $147 million a mile to go from Riverside to ACC or UT because that's not going to do anything to relieve traffic. Also, we need, not so much on the bike routes and I think we've done enough with the bike routes and now some of our side streets are crowded. We've actually taken up some really good lanes, so, sorry.
Some of the people who ride bikes are really disappointed right now.
I ride, hey, I ride a bike, I ride a bike all the way from Breaker Lane to Ben White. But we've taken up good lanes and that's actually crowding our, our streets. And Dallas has a good system, Dallas has a movable middle wall.
We'll have more opportunities to talk about this. Let's move it to Aura.
My, my...
Look at Aura, she's so sweet. She, she touches him gently and says, "It's my time now."
I'm voting no on Proposition 1. As I said, the, it doesn't do anything to help with the connectivity. Samsung is in District One, Dell is in District One, one of the large employers, but someone on LaDesma who would qualify for a job has no way to get from LaDesma to Dell or Samsung. And so we've got to think more creatively and more intentionally about how we move people into the city and around the city. And once you put a fixed rail down, it's there and it leaves, you can't pick it up and move it someplace else. Growth is going east. If you look at the growth concept map, imagine Austin, I was on that plan for most of my life, it seems like. It's going downtown and it's going east. And so why they would start on a north-south orientation rather than thinking about how to get people from 71, 183 and 290 into town without being in their cars, I just don't know.
Andrew.
Well, I support rail and the concept of rail, but the price tag of this rail gives me some heartburn. There is a process and I do believe that it should be, go up to the election of the people and I think it should be up to the people of Austin to decide, is this too much? Is it too expensive or not? And there is a process, if it does by some miracle get approved, which I don't think it is because it's too expensive, but if it does, there is a process that the bond is not then just issued. It does have to go through a process and will involve the new 10-1. So, you know, what is proposed is not always what happens with bonds and it's also a very long process and it's not just done in one year. So it's not like we're going to get a billion dollars, you know, out in bonds in one year. It's a gradual process and it has to go through a lot of vetting and a lot of process. I think that to change our culture, our car culture to mass transit, we have to provide opportunities for parking rides that are accessible and that provide reliable and frequent service. We have to have a hybrid, mass transit and personal transit.
Let's move on to Dwayne.
Okay. Well, I've already said transportation is one of the number one issues in Austin and we all know that we can't build any roads in Austin. We're pretty much landlocked. And so if we can't build roads, then we have to look at what are our other options? And when we start looking around the room and looking at what are our other options, rail quickly rises to the top as that next option. And so I support Prop 1 and the reason that I support Prop 1 is, like I said, we can't build roads, we have to get Austin moving. And a lot of the argument against Prop 1 is that it's expensive. Well, think about this, if it's expensive now, then how expensive will it be in five years or 10 years? Because eventually we're going to have to do something. And, you know, if we kill this proposition and say, well, well, we'll do it later, well, you know, later it won't be $1 billion, later will be $5 billion. And so I think we need to act now and once we get the rail built and people see how successful it is, I think we'll thank ourselves.
He doesn't want me to yell at him anymore, but stick to one minute.
If it passes, I'm just going to be like, oh, well. If it doesn't pass, that's good because it's a rail line that's just, it appears that it's just going to serve students and students ride the, ride public transit for free anyway. I mean, it's moving from that area of Riverside straight up through UT and ACC and it doesn't really serve the workforce, it seems. And I would propose instead for us, for Capital Metro to buy, you know, hybrid buses, more electric buses and then create more routes, like Aura was saying, like maybe from deep East Austin to Samsung or like the Domain or places where, you know, lines that'll get people to work and back home. And a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week bus system would be really rad for all the service industry workers. I know that myself.
Thank you. Sam.
All right, thank you. I will vote no if the current proposal stand the way it is written right now. The reason is because it doesn't make sense just to connect one part of the city by neglecting other part of the city. Why can't we just extend the whole thing to East Austin, even in District One? Let everybody benefit from it, not just one part of the city. It seems like every time we talk about transportation issue, it's either from the airport to downtown to UT, always. Why can't we think about those that live in East Austin or North Austin? They also pay taxes in the community. So if they change the whole concept, the way it is written right now, yes, I will support it. But the way it stands right now, I would say no, because it does not involve the whole city and that's the reason why I would say no as it stands currently.
Thank you so much.
I think I previously said that I'm against the, the proposal and it just essentially, it costs too much to move too few people from point A to point B. There might be a solution out there, but this one's too expensive. I like to remind people that right now, even before this proposal, the city of Austin has $5.6 billion in outstanding debt, which basically means every person in this hall right now owes $7,000 approximately just from their existing debt before we even start talking about Project Connect or anything else. So the debt load is pretty high and we can't even get agreement between the various districts. A lot of people wanted the Lamar-Guadalupe corridor. I personally would prefer more east-west corridor for move the traffic around. I think a north-south route doesn't help things and it's too expensive.
How about another question? Mike?
Got a good one here, a very specific one. Regarding impacts on neighborhoods from entertainment venues and tourism, how would you hold venue owners accountable for over-parking, restraining noise and removing trash from customers? Where do you draw the balance between the commercial interests in, in Austin as the live music capital and the interests of residents and livability standards?
Why don't we start again in the middle? Dwayne, you want to take it?
Okay.
One minute, Dwayne.
Well, I'm the president of my neighborhood association, so I understand neighborhood issues. And one of the things that I would do to address this issue is work with those neighborhood presidents to go into the neighborhoods and find out, you know, how can we deal with this traffic issue, the trash issue? Because one thing that we know is festivals in Austin aren't going to go away. And so we need to figure out, how can we make them coexist? And one of the ways that we can make festivals and neighborhoods coexist is, you know, building working relationships. So if, if festival-goers parking in neighborhoods is an issue, then, you know, we go in there, we work with the neighborhoods and perhaps we can charge the people that are parking in neighborhoods like a user fee, like, just like they would if they were, you know, going to a venue that had onsite parking. And then the same thing, requiring the venue managers to go back into those neighborhoods the next day and pick up any trash that was left behind. I think those are two good, workable solutions to address this issue.
Okay, let's move on to Chris, please.
For, for parking, I have absolutely no idea. I mean, I don't know how to solve that problem. I mean, it's if, hello? If people are parking in, in neighborhoods, I mean, it's, it's kind of already like that. Like I walk outside my door and I see, I see cars parked all along the sides of the street, you know? As far as trash pickup, yeah, I mean, we could, I guess we could make it, make an ordinance or ask the businesses to go ahead and pick up the trash, just leave it the way they left it. And if they don't, I mean, I guess we would have to eventually slap a fine on them or something. But it seems kind of specific. It's not really my focus, to be honest, about what's going on with the festivals and the trash pickup and parking. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Sam.
Okay, thank you. I think one of the ways to solve the problem is you have to work with the neighborhood, get them involved. You have a meeting, they should know what's going, what's going on in their neighborhood before anything happens. And also you have to enforce the zoning laws and enforcement is very, very important. Let the city officials do their job because it doesn't make sense for someone to be playing loud music in a residential neighborhood disturbing, disturbing the peace of everybody. So, and also I will encourage the Capital Metro to give a free ride. We can have a free parking where Capital Metro can transport individuals from one venue to another venue. That will help to alleviate some of these problems. So it's very crucial. We're encouraging entertainment, at the same time, there has to be a balance. But I strongly believe that the community, the resident, they have to have a say what comes in their own neighborhood, not just a city council zoning stuff in different neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
George.
I would just sort of keep it simple with a two-pronged approach. You need to enforce existing ordinances and in addition to that, you need to help develop the relationships between neighborhood associations and venue owners. And I think those, taking those two approaches would help solve the issue.
Thank you. Let's jump to Valerie.
Again, this is a issue regarding zoning. We're going to be rewriting the land development code, that's going to be really important. We've seen this kind of mixed-use development encroach in areas like the Guadalupe neighborhood along East Sixth Street and then of course, we've seen what's happened to Rainey Street and that's, it is problematic. Yes, Austin is the live musical capital of the world, but it's not an entitlement to clubs and bars to go wherever they want. We have to be conscious of the neighborhoods, respect the neighborhood plans, but, but it obviously isn't working, so we need to increase communication. So I would suggest setting up a committee, bringing the two groups together to figure out how best we can work together. And of course, in the meantime, yes, absolutely enforce ordinances and create a fee structure, start doing that to tell people that this is a neighborhood, enjoy yourselves, but also please be respectful.
Michael.
I agree with that. We definitely need to do zoning, work with the zoning department and actually listen to the customers, which are the citizens that are in that neighborhood and listen to some of the things that they're saying. If they're complaining about the music and they're complaining about the parking, they're complaining about the, the trash, then we need to do something about it. And definitely bring them in, talk with them, talk with the, the vendors, the promoters and see if we can come to some type of compromise.
Aura, do you want to take it?
Yes, I, I do. I think it's, it is a public policy issue and I think that the city council in the past have introduced some ordinances that allowed a more laxed kind of view of live music in the neighborhood. So doing South by Southwest, if you own a home, you can have a, a permit to do a venue, but the neighbors don't know that that's happening. Parking, they've relaxed some of the parking requirements. So it's a public policy issue and some of these need to be reviewed to see if it really makes sense now that we've got 150 people moving into town every day. So I think the first thing I would do is review some of those ordinances that impact neighborhoods and the live music capital of the world and see if we can come to some common agreement. The other thing that I think that we should do is talk with code compliance. Code compliance works eight, Monday through Friday, eight to five, I guess. And so some of these incidents happened on the weekend and they need to work at weekends.
Andrew.
I would agree that zoning is going to be a big issue. You know, if we have nightclubs that are in neighborhoods, they're going to have to have, I mean, they're not going to be compatible, but where they are close and can have an impact, then there needs to be sound mitigation and we need to have adequate parking. We need to plan for the growth in areas where it's appropriate and in ways that it helps augment the neighborhood. I would say that we do have a tendency to run to code compliance and the police and to other people before we run to our neighbors. So always first, I would encourage people to first go to the people who are parking in your neighborhood, go to the people who are responsible for whatever it is that's causing an issue. And I will really encourage and help facilitate that discussion because I think through having dialogue, we can find out why is that trash getting there? You know, what are the issues and how can we address them? Maybe this club can, this issue with sound mitigation can be addressed through some program with the city of Austin. So I think that it's really important that we have an open dialogue, to have a discussion, to find the solutions. So it's more than just calling code compliance police, but zoning is very important to stop it from beginning in the first place.
I don't know about you, but I'm really enjoying learning a lot, but I think we only have time for two more questions. You can tackle the candidates on you before we leave. We have time. We can stay here all night. Andrew can stay here all night. We'll leave him here.
And I should say that all these questions are great and thank you guys very much for participating as much as you can.
Yes, 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 yes. Do you want to shoot the next one?
Yeah, I think we're going to, I think we're going to close on a couple of economic questions since you guys have circled around affordability as a major issue for the district. The first is, do you think the city should offer larger...
The first is, do you think the city should offer large tax breaks to companies moving to Austin? And I'd also put that in context. I think some of you have answered that you try, work to bring better jobs to the district. Think about that as you're answering the question.
Want to start with Valerie?
So what was the question again?
Do you think the city should offer large tax breaks to companies moving to Austin?
What? What was the last part? I'm sorry.
Do you think the city should offer large tax breaks to companies moving to Austin? Should the city use tax incentives to bring companies to the city?
I don't have a problem with tax incentives. My problem is enforcement. We pursue companies, and we do need jobs and economic development, and we get a promise of so much work done, so much contracting done, so many jobs hired locally, but we don't check, and we don't look up, enforce those. I was just at, the City of Austin is doing a disparity study, looking at minority and women-owned businesses, actually the beneficiaries of these incentives in some ways. And they had a stakeholders' meeting with Hispanic contractors, and the reports they were giving, it was a group of about 20, were unanimous, almost unanimous, that all of these big companies that are here now have never met or these, the promises that they said they were going to do as far as hiring and jobs. So we need an audit. I think we need an audit, we need to look at what was promised, we need to look at who's delivered, and if they haven't delivered, we need to start.
Hold them accountable?
Holding them accountable, absolutely.
Sorry, I shouldn't be putting words into anybody.
Can you say that question one more time?
Sure. Do you think the city should offer large tax breaks to companies moving to Austin?
Okay. I think we need to focus on the smaller businesses, and that's going to be the major problem. Small businesses, they need actually the help. Your large companies are moving here to Austin, they need to pay their share, pay their share of the taxes. And that's my thought on that.
Thank you.
And I agree with Michael. The thing that we, the thing that I think we need to consider is that we have so many people moving to Austin, that if we are not targeting specific locations and demographics, then all the money goes to the Round Rock School District, which is where Apple is, or Samsung and Dell are in the Maynor ISD. So the Austin Independent School District is also losing out on that. Not only can we not get jobs out there, but the district doesn't even benefit from them moving here. So I think that I would, the other quick thing, because I see I got 18 minutes. When we talk about poor people.
18 seconds.
18 seconds. When we talk about poor people, we talk about subsidies. When we talk about rich companies, multimillion national, international companies, we talk about incentives. So we need to stop giving subsidies unless they're going to put people and businesses where they are helpful.
Sir?
I would agree that a lot of the tax breaks that we give, we don't get a good return on investment. So we really need to make sure that we're really specific about what we're asking for and make sure that we're actually getting back. I don't think Tricodile and Economics worked very well in the past, and I don't think it's going to work very well in the future. So I think we need to empower businesses in Austin that are Austin-owned. I think we really need to focus on homegrown, home-owned businesses first. And we need to make sure that whatever incentives we provide, whether it's through safe, mixed-use accessible, reasonably-priced transit-oriented housing, or whatever, you know, I worked on, I was on the urban renewal board, I was the chairman of that commission, and we provided incentives by matching developers with abilities to develop lands and helping remove some of the development hurdles for that. That's the kind of incentive. There's a lot of different kinds of incentives that we can have in Austin. What we really need is to make sure that we have a good metric to measure them, and we need to invest in local first. Thank you.
Thank you. Duane?
Okay. Tax incentives are just one tool in our toolbox when we talk about recruitment of large corporations here at Austin. We don't always offer them, and when we do, Austin is actually very judicious in their delivery of tax incentives. So I would hate to see that go away as an absolute. I think there's good examples of when we give tax incentives to corporations here in Austin. Samsung is a great example. And I wish the City of Austin did a better job of showing the community what we actually get in return when we offer tax incentives, because we don't always hear the backstory. You know, we hear this big number, and that's kind of what, you know, stays in everybody's mind, but, you know, we don't get the backstory when we talk about not only the jobs that they bring, but also the economic impact that they have over the entire community, whether it's direct or indirect.
Thank you.
Okay. So, the only tax incentive that I approve of is research and development. That's because you can, it's incalculable what kind of benefit research and development has to the future of humanity. You just can't even quantify it. Besides that, I am very much against all other kinds of incentives, breaks, 0% financing, and grants. And the state of Texas is really big on just dishing money out to corporations that already have hundreds of billions of dollars, and a lot of those companies have set themselves up here in Austin, as well as Houston, Dallas, San Antonio, El Paso. But that, we have a huge issue in our political culture here in Texas of promoting private profit and putting profit before people, and I would like there to be a moratorium on state, county, city, tax incentives, 0% financing, grants, and all that baloney.
Okay, Sam?
All right. It depends. It depends on what we're talking about. If you give subsidy to local businesses, yes, I'm for it. If you want to give a subsidy to a company in India or China to move to Austin, Texas, and you promise they're going to create 500 jobs in the City of Austin, and after the incentive, they bring in 400 employees from India and China, I'm against it. It doesn't make sense. They have to live up to the promise they made to the residents of Austin. So if, as a council member, we had to have an oversight to make sure these companies live up to their own promises, because guess, guess what? Who pays for it? You do. You pay for the incentives. So it depends on the type of incentive we're talking about. If it's going to promote the Austin economy, fine, but I will strongly support local businesses being given incentive in the City of Austin. I'm a business owner, I need incentives too.
George?
Well, seeing as how I own a research and development company, I'm all for Chris's plan.
All of the incentives to research and development.
A serious answer would be, I've already tonight mentioned that I think there should be a better balance between incentives that go to large corporations and small businesses. Small businesses is where most jobs come from, and I think there should be more emphasis on that. As far as absolutely saying never to large corporations, I wouldn't go that extreme, because you never know. You want to keep it in your toolbox. If 3M or Dell or somebody decides that, yeah, they really want to put something right in the middle of District 1, I'll listen to that and consider incentives, but I think there needs to be a better balance than what we've done in the past.
So this is the last question, and I would like to remind you that the order in which our candidates are seated is the order in which they are going to be on the ballot. So I'd like you to hear from them in that order for this last question. Okay? Mike?
We'll go ahead and make it a whopper. I think a lot, there's a lot of sentiment out there, a lot of concern, I think probably a lot of anger and frustration about APD and the way that APD interacts specifically with this community. And I would like to get you each to address how you would work with APD to change what some might call a serious problem, and I would say some might call. I'm a reporter.
I guess that's me first.
It is you.
One thing I've mentioned in previous forums is that I'm really for community policing that really works. We have a district rep in our area, J.J. Seabrook. His name is Brian Robinson. He makes efforts to come out to the Neighborhood Association and talk to people, and I think having more police officers who are able to actually go out and visit people and get to, where everybody gets to know each other would really help. I think that one of the problems that we have is people don't trust APD, and we just need to really work on that with, you know, the district reps, the commanders' forums. And I just feel that there are a lot of things that we could be doing better, and it's just going to take time to gain everybody's trust.
Okay. Let me begin by saying, I think three months ago, I invited the police chief to my Neighborhood Association meeting to meet with the residents in the Harris Branch Neighborhood Association. Community engagement is very, very important. The police should know who they're policing. If you have cops that don't live in the City of Austin, they don't know the neighborhood, they don't know the neighbors, who they police. So we should encourage officers to live in the neighborhood, the police. And also training. Some of them have to go through a sensitivity training, because, trust me, not every cop is a good cop, or every cop is a bad cop. We have good apples and bad apples. It's the job of the police chief to find out who the bad apples are and get them out of the police force. But we should, at the same time, as a community, support the police department, those that are doing a very good job, we should encourage them, give them the resources they need to get the job done as a community. Thank you very much.
In my, I'll wait for it to, wait, is it a minute? Okay. In my experience, the main issue is race and class. That's the reality. And then furthermore, I think with the police training, there are, there are good cops. I've also met really great cops, you know, and then I've had some issues with others before. But there's a great book called Nonviolent Communication. There are also workshops in nonviolent communication. I think we could integrate that into the training as the officers exit their training, as they leave the academy. And there is one more thing, but I forgot it. But I think it's really important that the cops, you know, take those courses. Oh, and wear cameras. That was the other thing. That's super important, because when everyone's on camera, they act better. They're more respectful to one another, and they won't misbehave, and that's all.
Okay. Well, in addition to the many things that I've already told you that I do, one thing that I haven't mentioned is I'm a reserve deputy with the Travis County Sheriff's Office. So I actually see this issue from both sides. I get to see this issue from both sides. One, when I'm wearing my uniform, and the other one, I'm not. And I will tell you that, in my view, the problem is it, there's, it's a culture problem. And, you know, we have a lot of good cops here in Austin, and I don't want to, you know, give the perception that we don't. We do. But the culture is, it's us versus them, and them is you. And so that's what we need to change. We need to change the culture within the police department to get them to understand that we are them, we are all together. And I think once we change the culture and get them to understand that they're a part of this community just like we are, and that, you know, we deserve to be respected just like they deserve to be respected, then I think we can get some movement on this issue in terms of being able to feel safe in our community and not feel like we're going to be killed by the cops whenever we have an encounter with them.
Again, I agree. These are all wonderful suggestions, and it's all true, unfortunately. When you have a police department that gives, that is here to protect and serve, but yet folks feel it's here to abuse, that's a problem, and that's not acceptable. We need a police force that reflects the community, reflects our diversity. So although I support increasing our force, if we are to bring in any new recruits, we have got to have measures that say that we are going to hire recruits that reflect our community. We have to, as people of color, I'll just tell you this, when you have, you have to have a backup, basically. And in order to represent your community, if there's, if you're the only person of color in the group, you're not going to be empowered to do it. So we have to have more police that reflect our community, and that means more Latino and African-American. And we also have to have training, absolutely. And we have to hold our police accountable.
The Austin Police Department is the highest-paid police department, one of the highest-paid in this country. Walking out of the door, you know, your officers, they're getting $60,000 a year, after one year, over $70,000. The Austin Police Department, what we can do is work with them to bring in conflict resolution to get, you know, a better working relationship with the community by getting them to, sorry, my mic is going out, by getting them to work with the community. It's like, you know, back when I was in the military, I served in Bosnia, and I had to work with the Bosnian community, with the mayors and the city. And in order for me to do that, I had to sit down and, you know, listen to an interpreter and get my, and actually relate to some of their problems and their issues. By us living in, by the police department actually living in this community, being a part of the community, being that person that actually comes out, you know, and actually, you know, the person that solves the problem by communicating with the young boy, playing games with them, you know, and working with them in a much better way, we'll be able to, you know, move forward with it.
I wanted him to say his piece, although it took him a minute twenty.
I have to give you a disclaimer. My oldest child is a member of law enforcement, and so I hear both sides of the issue. Yet when he comes to Austin at 40 years old, I have to give him the same speech that I gave him when he was a teenager about if a policeman stops you, you have to do this. Nobody else in this town, unless they have a black or brown child, has to give that speech every time he comes in. He will say to me, but Mom, I'm a police officer, and, you know, da-da-da-da-da. And I say, but they won't know that until they take that badge off your dead body. So you have to do it a different way in Austin. So in the time that's left, when I was growing up, they were called peace officers. Now we're calling policemen law enforcement. That whole shift from peace to enforcement, I think, makes that culture a little different, and we need to help work on changing it back to peace officers.
Thank you, Andrew.
I would really agree with a lot of the ideas that have been expressed. I think having stipends for officers to live in the communities where they police, I think increasing dialogue, I think having actual community policing where you have people that get to know people that are in the neighborhood and interact with them, then you have a better relationship, and you're able to both identify what the issues are in the area and work together to overcome those. So I think that, you know, this is an issue that really, I've worked with the Houston Tilted and Young Democrats, NAACP and ACLU. I saw my neighbor get racially profiled, pulled out of his car, laid out handcuffed in front of the whole neighborhood. It was because he was driving while black. We took on this issue of consent search with the police department through the city council, and it got changed. We can change policy, and by changing policy, we can change the behavior of the department. They went from having verbal consent, which is where they said I could search them, to having to have probable cause or written consent. So it all begins with us standing up and saying, we need to do something about this, coming together and having the dialogue to move the ball forward.
Why don't we give them a round of applause? I don't know about you, but I think there is no substitute for human contact. I would not have learned all these things had I just visited their websites. So it's wonderful that you were here, it's wonderful that the candidates were here. I am so, so grateful to each of the candidates. We are only missing one, imagine that. So that's wonderful. And I'm so grateful to this beautiful church that allowed us to be here. So thank you so much, Wesley United Methodist Church. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We are so grateful that you had us here. And I am very grateful to each of you, because it's a Monday night, I'm sure you had many, many things to do, and you chose to be here. Thank you so much. I also want to remind you that you need to visit kut.org, okay? There's more information about the forums, there's more RSVPs to other events, and I also want to thank our media partners, The Austin Monitor, The Austin Chronicle, KXAN, and Univision. And if you noticed, the microphones were amazing. So thank you so much to Rock and Roll Rentals for this awesome sound equipment. Thank you. I want to remind you that early voting begins October 20th, so don't forget that. And on your way out, there is a table with more information in the back. Thank you so much. My name is Joy Diaz, and I am so grateful that you were here tonight. Thank you.